Good evening, and welcome to the Issaquah City Council Committee of the Whole Tuesday, October 23 meeting. We have three items on the agenda this evening. First item deals with the I-90 Front Street Interchange Justification Report update. Second piece is on Squawk Talis Community Connections. And the third piece is on the King County Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan. And I will mention for those in the audience that after each of the items, I will ask if there's any public comment related to the item we just heard about. So with that, we will start off with Sheldon Lynn, Public Works Engineering Director, and Hilma Jimenez, consultant?
Thank you, counsel. I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. And earlier this year, WashDOT presented to the city council at a council committee of the whole meeting, the IJR, and it was at the beginning of the study period, and what to expect, what the IJR does, what the purpose of it is, typically who's involved in it, FHWA, WashDOT, and stakeholders. And as stated back then, this is an update, bringing back to council what has been done on the IJR, and the status of the document and the study, and what results are out of that study. So I'm going to have Hilma Jimenez up from Berger ABAM, who is WashDOT's consultant and project manager on this study, talk.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheldon. Good evening. So today's agenda, again, my name is Hilma Jimenez. And so this evening's agenda, we want to just go through a few touchpoints. Feel free to ask any questions as we go through. So we want to share a little bit more about the background and objectives, and then share with you the touchpoints we had with the community and stakeholders, some of the data results, the purpose and need for the study, and the processes that we embarked on in the study, share with you the alternatives, and then also the screening process, and the next steps. So, and most importantly, then, the key takeaways. So background for this study. Back in 2012, WashDOT commissioned the I-90 Bellevue to North Bend Quarter Planning Study. This study was intended to address mobility and congestion issues, and particularly for freight along the I-90 corridor. And it was also a promise that was made to FHWA at the time of the construction or the approval of the Sunset Interchange, that WashDOT would not do any additional work in terms of major work on interchanges without having taken a comprehensive look at the whole I-90 corridor. Just about that same time, the city of Issaquah went through the central Issaquah Plan that was also interested in mobility and wanted to see what elements could be improved or needed to be improved in order to support the growth that the city was planning. Both of these studies mentioned the I-90 Front Street Interchange as a potential area of improvement to support mobility and growth in the area. So, starting off, the DOT commissioned the study and asked two key questions. Question number one was, the element number one was for us to advance then the previous studies. That was objective number one. And number two was to answer three key questions. Number one, are congestion problems due to local network issues, or are they related to the interstate or interchange? And I'll share a little bit later as to why that question is so important. Secondly, if the problems are related to the interchange itself, then really, what would be the preferred set of solutions or preferred alternative to address the congestion and safety issues? And then last but not least, then what were the costs then recommended for the improvements? And so before we embarked on this study, WashDOT decided that it really was important to touch the community and talk to the local users in the area to find out what their experiences are and what their thoughts were in terms of the operations and mobility within the area. As you can see, we've made contact with several local businesses such as Costco, Rowley, and several groups such as the Chamber of Commerce. We did talk to some property owners, but most importantly, WashDOT decided that they would invite these agencies to support in the development of the overall study and be steering the study as well as evaluating the data. So they assembled what is known as an Interchange Justification Report Support Team. And they were, they actually evaluated all of the data. So as you can see, a total of 16 people or groups were contacted right at the beginning in different areas that had basically very good knowledge of the operations and were key users then of the I-90 Front Street Interchange. And combining all of their input, we found certain key themes. The key themes that they shared with us were, number one, they felt that Front Street congestion was caused by regional traffic passing through the city of Issaquah. It was not a local problem. It's strictly regional. This is what we heard. They also said that they thought that both local and regional improvements would be necessary to relieve congestion, and that we needed to find a way to encourage more of the regional traffic to use alternate routes as opposed to cutting through, is what they shared, or through the city of Issaquah. And then they were also concerned then about what would happen as Issaquah continues to grow, more vehicles coming into the area. They thought that there is a constraint, a key constraint is the number of north-south corridors across I-90 because I-90 splits the city in half. And then they thought that it would be important that any improvements we considered needed to accommodate all modes of traffic, not just vehicles, but also transit. So armed with this information, we embarked on doing a very extensive data collection program. And one of the first things that we did was started with data that's really available to a lot of people. And very early on, we found something very interesting. This is Google collected data on a typical Thursday at 5:00 PM. And what you can see here is, I think, let's see if my pointer helps me here, is we see the long expected traffic slowdowns along Front Street. But what we do not see, which surprised us, was the same typical backups on I-90. We thought that that was interesting. So we went then and did very extensive data collection, and we also looked at quite a few DOT cameras, and this is what we found. We found that overall, the congestion at this interchange, at least in the PM peak, is mainly due to vehicles that are headed eastbound in the PM, and that are headed to the north towards Semamish, and not to the south. And so, once we started looking at the data, what we learned then, is coming back to this previous image, is that these two problems tend to not be the same problem. They are in the same area, but one is not caused by the other. So the congestion that we experience on Front Street is not solely due by southbound vehicles heading from other regions through the city of Issaquah. So as you can see also in this picture...
I'm sorry. I think we may have a question, a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I just didn't understand your, I didn't understand what you said, and the reason for saying it.
Yes. Because remember, I said that when we talked to the, to the local groups and businesses, they felt that the congestion on Front Street that you see in the PM peak is solely due because of vehicles that are heading eastbound on I-90 and that are heading southbound then to the cities to the south, and that are using Issaquah as a flow-through bypass of, let's say, SR-18 or what have you not. So they thought, a lot of them shared, that if indeed we were to widen SR-18, that this problem would go away. Because people that were in the regional traffic, they had no business in Issaquah, would not be stopping at Front Street if they had another way of going through. And so, but this is not what the data supports. The data, yes?
So, I guess my, I guess showing what the data supports, but I don't know, maybe we'll get to the part where is the southbound traffic headed south on Front Street not headed as pass-through, and why some of that traffic wouldn't go over to, how we know they wouldn't go over to Highway 18?
Yes, and we will be covering that. Was there another question?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on yours. Thank you for, could you go back to the previous slide? And I do want to point out that if you only studied one of the three legs that feed south onto, onto South Front Street, if you only studied the Front Street exit at I-90, I can see how you might not be able to make a correlation between eastbound traffic offloading on Front Street and what happens on South Front Street. But I think you also must consider what, what feeds from Newport Way and what feeds from Sunset, the Sunset Interchange as well. There are three corridors, not just the Front Street one that feed it. So there, there definitely is, and I think the data we've already seen shows, that the feeding of those three corridors contributes significantly to the backup that happens in the PM. And perhaps what you've learned in the data, that eastbound on I-90 isn't the sole contributor to that, and cannot be subscribed as the, as the reason for that. But it certainly, but the reality is, is it is evening traffic passing through that causes this congestion.
So, those are good points. I would say that our data does, our analysis did go that far. We analyzed a total of 27 intersections, and we, and we actually did travel times and counts around all of those major corridors that you, that you, that you mentioned, Newport, Gilman, we looked at all of them. So the point what we're making though, is we wanted to make sure, the DOT wanted to make sure that the solutions that were being offered or crafted were not solving a perceived problem, but the actual problem. So that was the first point that we were trying to establish, is let's find out what really is. But we thought it was important to get the understanding of what the local community thought the problems were. And so what we are saying here is, is that what we found is, is that the traffic backups on Front Street are not solely due because of eastbound to southbound vehicles. So that, that is the point we're making. We're not, we are in agreement with everything you said about all the other quarters coming into play. Yes?
Just one follow-up, and I know, comment as well. And of course, the purpose of your study is about the usability and the safety of people on I-90. And, right, and so, and so, and so I, the primary interest is that, especially the operation of that exit at Front Street and I-90, and assuring that, that users of that and people driving by on I-90 are not in a unsafe situation. Correct?
That is, that is correct. And it actually has to do with the intended use of the freeway, and I'll, I'll get into it a little bit more here in a second. But there, there are some key questions before you're able to make any improvements on an interstate facility that need to be answered, primarily whether or not the problems are local, or whether or not they're regional. And so this is the reason why it is that we are parsing the data to understand what it really means. Was there another question, a council member?
Yes. So I understand what you're saying, and trying to get there. But if you look at the map, and you see that all of a sudden, Front Street is red from I-90 south, and you're saying that it's not a contributing factor...
No, 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 I did not, I did not say that it's not a contributing factor. I said it was not the sole contributing factor. So, so that the problem is not solely related by vehicles that are getting off of I-90. Now, there are a lot of vehicles that are from the north, coming from, let's say, Semamish north, and are going through Front Street that are to, all the way to the south. We're not discounting those vehicles. We're not discounting the vehicles that are probably in the afternoon, heading westbound and heading south. We're solely saying that the backups, which is what the people thought in terms of some of the key messages that we heard when we were talking to the community, the data does not support that all of the backup on Front Street is due to people coming off of I-90, heading eastbound in the afternoon, heading south. That's all we're saying.
So, okay. So taken most literally, there is one exit lane on eastbound, at exit 17, there's one lane that you can go south on, on Front Street. And, okay, that one lane is not the reason why we have some, you know, a backup on that lane is not the reason why we have so much traffic through Issaquah. But it's, I mean, it is, it is unimpeachable data that if we did not have the high volumes of traffic, both inbound in the morning and south, or northbound in the morning and southbound in the afternoon, down Issaquah-Hobart Road, which is what, which is why, I think the reaction that you're hearing from this council is the idea that somehow this lessens the necessity of expanding Highway 18, which would have a profound impact on traffic in our city.
Well, I mean, if you, I, I'm going to touch on all of those issues in a couple minutes here. I want to make sure, but, but what we are saying is, is that the data did not support that which is one of the perceived elements by some of the people within the community. In fact, what the data showed is that more than two-thirds of the vehicles that are exiting eastbound, the eastbound off-ramp, are heading actually to the north in the PM peak. And you can see that supported by the photo. In fact, I just drove by here at 5:30 this evening, and it was exactly like this. So really, then what does the data show are the problems associated with these interchange? They're fourfold. First, we found, the data showed us that more than 30% of the vehicles that are in the interchange space are vehicles that are just trying to head either north or south, has nothing associated, is not traffic associated with I-90. They're not getting off I-90, they're not trying to get on I-90. So there's 30% of the vehicles are just trying to do that. What we also found was that, again, as I just mentioned, two-thirds of the vehicles in the PM peak that are heading off the ramp are making the left turn, heading north. As well as then in the PM, and sometimes the AM peak, we find that congestions associated with I-90 are due to the left turns also in the westbound to southbound movement that extend all the way back into the main lines. Also, we found then that the left turns, which is what I think, council member, you were just referring to, we found that the left turns pockets on Front Street are so short to try to access I-90, that they are causing backups also then onto Front Street. Right? And then, most importantly, we found that 41% of the accidents in this area, in this stretch of I-90, are at the interchange, with 53% of them being collisions on the ramps. This is usually a sign of the backups. Because if you're doing 60 miles per hour, or even 50 miles an hour, and you head off the ramp, and boy, there is a big backup there, people end up rear-ending, distracted drivers do rear-end others. So this is what the data showed us, are the issues associated with the operations within this interchange. Now, so these are the self-same items I just mentioned, and plus the fact that we think that local and regional growth is expected to make congestion even worse as we continue to grow. This is only expected. So WashDOT, having worked then with this group of agencies, King County, Sound Transit, city of Semamish, they identified the purpose for this study to be fourfold. Number one, to increase capacity for vehicles crossing I-90 near and/or at Front Street, to improve local and regional circulation through I-90 Front Street, to improve safety on I-90 and/or the Front Street Interchange, especially at the eastbound off-ramp, and then to provide solutions to improve mobility at the Front Street Interchange to accommodate current and expected growth. So it's not just a, let's fix the problem today, let's make sure that we're fixing the problem for the future as well. So, back in January, the DOT shared with you the study process. And we noted that as soon as we started, we were going to get this information from the stakeholders, which we did get, and that we were going to conduct the study in a two-phase manner. The first phase was going to be doing some traffic modeling, getting all this data collection, and trying to get to this key question of answering these key questions. Can local improvements alone meet the need? Is this a city-street problem only? And if the answer to that question was yes, then we would conclude the study. The question is, well, why would you end at that point? Well, the reason is because WashDOT has entrusted the management of the federal facility by FHWA. And the federal facility is intended primarily for state and regional traffic, not for jump trips within a city. And also, as you can see in section 550 of the manual, it calls for the fact, it calls for the need to check to make sure, and we added this detail here for you to be able to read it in your packets, but it requires that you establish that the needs are not just local. So you cannot just improve the interchange if the traffic is just to get from, let's say, SR-900 to get off at, at Front Street. That would not be allowed by the feds, because it's not protecting the, the federal facility. So, but if the answer to that question then turned out to be no, that local improvements alone did not meet the need, then we would identify the solution or set of solutions that would help resolve the problems, at which point then we would get into the Interchange Justification Report, which is the report that the federal government requires before, to prove the need and the fact that you are not making the interstate facility worse. And then we talked about the fact that we would be working on getting some cost estimates, and all this work needed to be done by December, because we want to have the information to provide to the legislature for the next legislative session in terms of funding. So armed with all of this information, then WashDOT with its team evaluated and developed 36, identified 36 alternatives. Now, five of these alternatives were strictly new north-south crossings of I-90. Another nine were widening of existing roads. Three of them, seven of them were new roads or corridors. 13 were freeway interchange revisions. And then there were another two that were just transit-related. So armed with the information of that purpose and need as a guide, we went through a two-tier screening process, which in the very first tier was able to identify that 27 of those 36 were nice things to do, but were really not things that were meeting those elements identified in the purpose and need. So there were a set of nine options that I'm going to share with you now, which were the ones that were evaluated in more detail. So the first option was alternative number three, and the numbers you see here are just the sequential numbers that were in the, of the 36. So this option called for raising, building a new ramp in the median of northwest Gilman Road. If, if you can imagine, that whole area is really flat and just about the same elevation as I-90. So coming up with this ramp that would go up high to provide an overcrossing, to then come back down on the other side. Now, once we penciled that out, this is what it looked like. You would be moving Gilman widening into the right-of-way of DOT, which would be an issue, as well as then you would be blocking off the left-turn movements into, from Gilman onto the, the businesses to the south. And also, as you can see, this option calls for going through the major parking lot of the businesses that you have to the north. This option had some issues, but continued to be in the study. And we used it as a baseline option to just try to identify how it would work in comparison to some other things. This second alternative, alternative number four, you might have seen before, this concept calls for raising I-90 and building, extending northwest Maple Street at grade. So connecting it to the north into the development that you're working currently right now at 62nd. This was what that looks like. You can see for these nine, we actually didn't just do sketches, but we actually laid out about 10% engineering on them to understand the impacts to the businesses and what have you not. Can see that this one potentially has a little bit of an impact to the restaurant right there at the corner of Maple, but it seemed to be feasible. The other option that we considered was widening Fourth Avenue Northwest, as well as finding another way to cross over, to grow up in grade, to come across I-90, which again, as I mentioned, is really flat right now, to come down on the other side and connect into 62nd. One of the problems with this option was that Fourth Avenue Northwest is right up next to the trail, so we could not widen to the, to the east. We had to actually just widen to the, to the, to the west, and then that was causing some issues here with Emily Durst. This option, we did not evaluate much further. This is kind of what it would look like, once we laid it out. All of these businesses here would be impacted. The next option that we looked at was one you just mentioned, was what happens if we were to widen the remaining six miles of SR-18? Now, we know that the council, the city of Issaquah, and WashDOT have worked really hard to getting funding for the work that's happening there right now, which is the revisions of the I-90 SR-18 interchange, plus widening up to Deep Creek. That project is embarked. What the analysis showed, once we did the traffic modeling, is that most benefit actually is gained by those improvements that are actually underway now in terms of the design. And we did not find additional improvements in terms of faster travel times, once we widened the additional six miles. And reason being is because there are already climbing lanes, where in the climbing lane section, there are already two lanes. So widening the additional was not necessarily adding any, we did not show that the vehicles moved from Front Street onto SR-18. At least that's what the model showed.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yes.
So how did you determine that traffic wouldn't move to Highway 18?
Yeah, so each one of these, so for instance, we did this, we modeled, we did traffic modeling. And what we did is, is called dynamic traffic assignments. And what the, what we showed in the models, the models actually add more traffic based on whether travel times or speeds are improved. It's almost like you would say, like Google, if you're trying to get from one location to the next, you know, say to you, if you go this way, it's 17 minutes, but if you go this other way, it's 14 minutes. It may be longer, but it's 14 minutes, so people will take that. Well, the models that we use are able to tell that kind of precision. And so what we were able to show, the models that we created then, that included this entire area, showed that widening those additional, extending those lanes, it was not changing the speed of the vehicles on SR-18. And so therefore, it did not become a preferred route over Front Street.
So, I'm not a traffic engineer, but when you increase capacity, then I think it's reasonable to assume that traffic is going to go faster. So is the modeling, so help me understand a little more why the traffic flow wouldn't be better? Is it because you're looking into the future, and there's additional cars, or is there some other reason that they're not, the traffic wouldn't, that, that there's not going to be, that that space would fill? I mean, I just don't understand, I don't understand the logic, all right? Because I'm not an engineer.
Right. Well, I think the issue is, if you, let's say, a road that's not congested at all, you know, it has enough capacity on it for all the vehicles that travel through it. If I make that road six mile, I mean, I add in two more lanes in each direction, it's not going to make me go any faster. I'm just going to go as fast as I was going. I have way more capacity, but I don't need that capacity. And so therefore, it's not necessarily encouraging people to come there because it's out of their way. This route is actually longer. This route is actually longer. And so what's happening is, is that the vehicles are saying, yeah, it may be faster to some extent, but the travel time still ends up being exactly the same. And the portions that we were widening, the increased capacity, are in areas that don't really need it, so to speak. So, most of the improvements, this is not to say, I want to make sure that we understand that, we're not saying that the improved, that there are no need for improvements over the today condition. What we are saying is that our models assume that the work that you have already commissioned and or sponsored to get to happen on I-90 and SR18, they are providing most of the improvement. So you will see an improvement from what you have today, but what you won't see is an improvement after those things are built. So most of the bang for the buck is happening with the, the work that's happening right now, that's under design now.
Did your modeling find that when the interchange is done, that there would be any change in traffic patterns? And would it pull any traffic off city streets?
So once we compared, once we compared what we had as the baseline project, which the baseline model in 2045, the no action, do nothing else, just build what's going to be there in 2045, we found no differences between that model and the model that included widening the additional six miles. So, so most of the improvements are happening by the construction of what's happening, or when the, what's happening, what's being designed, is when you're going to see the improvements. But widening the additional six miles was not providing improvements. Yes?
Do you know if, do you know the difference between the traffic that we're experiencing currently and what's projected to be once the currently funded and being built improvements at Exit 25 are finished? Do we know the impact that that has on our city?
So, help me understand the question again. You're trying to understand what, what happens once these improvements get constructed?
Are done, yes.
So by themselves, what happens? We could take a look at that to see if there is any, I, I, I want to say that we did not see any substantial improvements. What I think what's happening is, is that building this is allowing you to keep up with the growth that's going to happen, which is in the order of about 5% in the next 20 years, because our models went to 2045. So it's keeping up with that, but there is not necessarily, our models did not show tremendous amount of growth of vehicles heading southbound on Front Street. And that's because it's already constrained. There is no more room. So we actually found that in the, within that 20-year period, there was a maximum of about 100 more vehicles being added to Front Street total in the peak hour. So, because it's already, they, they don't have anywhere to go. So they are picking some other ways already.
Thank you. Other, other questions right now?
Okay, I'm going to, was there one more? Yes.
All right, Councilmember Robbins.
So, so you just said that, you know, it's at capacity, they're finding other ways to go. So what are those other ways? That, that'd be my question, because this is, this is one of them. The other ways are, you know, continue to go through the town. I mean, there's not many choices here. So when that, it's, it's a capacity, which it is basically now. If you can only fit 100 more cars through there, I'd call that capacity. So they have to find another way to go.
Yeah.
Which...
So, so it's interesting, because what we found, we found, we, we found that there were some issues, like for instance, the SR900. I mean, all of these interchanges got worse. All, what, what I, and, and all of the roads got worse. But what I'm saying is, is that in terms of added congestion on Front Street, we found just about, about 100 more vehicles, because that's all that could go there. So growth is happening throughout everywhere within the model, but not a substantial amount of growth on Front Street itself. All right. So, another option that we looked at was one that we heard from a lot of the people in the community also, was what happens if we were to go back to the Sunset Bypass? Not by itself, but the Sunset Bypass option coupled with the Issaquah-Hobart Road widening. This option actually proved to, to show a lot of benefits in terms of traffic movements within the city, because as you can imagine, you're building another viable north-south, south corridor within the city. But what we found was, coming back to Councilmember Goodman's question earlier, what we found was, because once we added that additional capacity, vehicles that would have stayed on SR18 now chose to go onto the Sunset Bypass, because it's a shorter, it's a shorter route with more capacity than what you have at Front Street. And so vehicles would be jumping from here and heading over here. And so this option also didn't seem to support then the elements of the purpose of need, primarily because, as you recall, when I showed you on the interchange, 2/3 of the vehicles are headed north. Well, this option is addressing the additional 100 vehicles that are heading south, as opposed to the ones that are heading north, that are the ones that are causing the backups, at least in the eastbound movement. So this one doesn't address that at all. So this option actually also was then eliminated, along with that SR18 option also. Another, the option that we looked at was then Alternative 24, which is a diverging diamond interchange. This is same kind of configuration that's being proposed for the SR18-I-90 interchange. And in the very first one is being constructed in Lacey over I-5. So this was one of the other options. This option showed to provide more improvements, more capacity for vehicles heading northbound, because diverging diamonds actually offer a lot of preferential treatment for vehicles that are turning left. And the other, and once we laid it out, it had very minimal impacts associated with this, because it's very compressed option. So there were really, even these impacts here at the gas station, we were able to eliminate once we tightened up our designs. Another option that we looked at was redoing then the interchange as a single-point urban interchange. This option, we did not model, because this option favors situations and locations where the left-turn movements are matching in terms of the amount. As you can imagine, if I had, this vehicle, there are about 800 vehicles headed north from westbound to northbound in the PM peak, but only about 200 vehicles that are making this movement in the PM. So as you can imagine, I would have a very long green time for these vehicles, but none of these over here, there would be no vehicles over here. So this option was also eliminated. Another option that we looked at then was actually creating a partial cloverleaf loop, because as you know, in cloverleaf interchanges, the left turns are free. They don't have to come to a light if we would be able to remove as much of those left-turn vehicles as fast as possible, without having a light, that would also improve conditions. However, once we laid it out, in terms of the, the geometry, showed that it would be impacting Gilman. The radius is far larger than what, than what we have in terms of space, so this option was also eliminated. And then last but not least, the ninth option of the remaining, second set of group of options after the first level of screening, was what happens then if we were to build a flyover ramp that directed all that left-turn movement into, directly into E6 M-MH, which is very similar to what you did at Sunset eventually, and you, along with the DOT. That was the other option. So we looked at, and this option actually ended up having a lot of impacts with some of the environmental features. There's the fish passage, culverts that were just constructed there recently, there's a creek, and more importantly, we would have to block off the intersection of 229, so that vehicles would, that are heading northbound could no longer turn right into 229. So that was definitely one of the reasons why this option eventually scored very low. So, cup, coming back, recap of those nine top options, four of them were advanced, but then four other ones were considered to be flawed or eliminated, including the widening of SR18, because it was not supporting then the purpose and need for the job, for the study. So from the nine options then, we went through some additional modeling and environmental considerations, and we, and the analysis found the diverging diamond to be the, to be the option that best addressed the purpose and need, and scored highest based on the least amount of impact to the natural environment, as well as to the businesses in the area, and has what we believe is perhaps the greatest potential of moving more traffic through the, through, through the area. We also then went back and said, well, what happens if we couple these two options? We coupled the interchange option with the raising I-90 option. This option, what we found by itself, is that it did remove some vehicles from, from the I-90, from the I-90 interchange that were just trying to cross north and south, but it did not remove enough vehicles to substantiate, to, to by itself fix the problems at the, at the interchange. What we found when we coupled these together was that, together, they're able to work very well. So these, the construction of improvements of the interchange do not preclude this happening, happening as a separate project. We were concerned that there was a potential that if we did both things together, one would affect the other. But now we know that these can, are two standalone projects that can work well with each other. So where are we? We've been able to determine that local improvements alone do not meet the need. There really are some issues with the interstate and the interchange configuration that can relieve congestion and improve mobility in the area. And so right now, what we're doing is, we're doing additional modeling then to vet and find out really the extent of the improvements that can be brought about by the configuration that was selected as a preferred alternative. And we are doing the preliminary engineering, working our way towards those cost estimates. So we are basically here. And so the key takeaways, and I think I got about three minutes. The key takeaways here are that the purpose for the project are, is that capacity of left turns and backups on the freeway are the ones that are really causing the regional traffic mobility as it pertains to this interchange. What we found is, is that the recommended option so far appears to be that changing the configuration into a diverging diamond could increase mobility for not only the vehicles on the interstate, but also the vehicles on Front Street. But we have to vet this. We are doing additional modeling at the time, right now. And last but not least, we found that other alternatives such as raising I-90 and connecting Maple at Grade, the Issaquah-Hobart Road and, and Sun, and Sunset Bypass, as well as SR18, these are all good options, but they by themselves are not able to fix the circulation problems associated with the interstate interchange at I-90 up Front Street. So that concludes my presentation. I, are there any more questions I can answer? Yes, Councilmember?
Council, uh...
For me, since I'm going to call Councilmember Hunt first.
Certainly, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I have some questions about the diverging diamonds. You mentioned that the first one in Washington will be in, the one in Lacey.
Correct.
Are there other examples that we could look at for how this works that are nearby or similar situation to this intersection?
So, actually, the diverging diamond interchange has been around for about 12 years now. There are over 100 of them across the US. But this just happens to be, Washington, we have been a little bit of late adopters. Right now, what I would suggest is that there is a, a video that WashDott has prepared on their website that shows the, had the mobility through the diverging diamond interchange. What happens is, is that in the diverging diamond, when you come off on the left turn, you drive through the interchange, you drive on the left-hand side, and then as you get through the interchange, then you go back onto the right-hand side. However, they are designed in such a way that you're not really aware of the fact that you are driving on the left-hand side of the road. So intentionally so, the barriers are created so that you are just walk, driving through your funnel. So it sounds really scary, but we found throughout the country in all, over the 100 DDI's that they've constructed, that it offers substantial improvements in terms of safety, reduces the type of collisions, the amount of collisions through, improves mobility and safety.
Okay. That was partly my next question, which is about driving on the left side. So there will be barriers, there'll also be, will there, there will also be a light controlling the direction?
Yes.
So when it crosses?
Yes.
Okay. And then, also, as far as the SR18 widening, you looked at 2045. Would you expect, based on what you saw for the difference there, would you expect that if you went further out in time, and if the region continued to increase, you would eventually see that capacity being used if the lanes were widened? Is it a question of where in time that improvement was assessed?
I, I suspect that that would be the case. I mean, if, if growth continues to happen throughout the whole region, yeah, there will be eventually more people on SR18. But traffic, traffic forecasting is not an exact science, and, you know, going out about 20 years is probably as good as you can, as probably as good as you can go, and in this case, about 27 years, so, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. That's fascinating, and it looks like there's just been a significant amount of, amount of work that, that you all have done. I'm, I totally understand the, the reason, I, so I understood the, talking about the, the improvements that would be expected for eastbound traffic heading north. I didn't hear anything about what sort of benefit there would be for traffic heading south. You're talking about only being able to add 100 cars in the future. It sounds like, I'm trying to figure out what, what improvements we would see on our city streets, primarily Front Street, resulting from the new interchange, just because I didn't really hear any.
Yeah, you're right. I was kind of silent on that. You're right. You caught me. So, overall, as I mentioned before, there are 27 intersections that we looked at, not just the ones right on either side of the, of the inter, of the interchange. And so what we did then is want to make sure, because the DOT has that responsibility of making sure that as they are making some improvements in one location, they're not just kicking the can down the road, right? So we looked at all of the intersections in the area, and we did find that that option, the diverging diamond option, provided the most amount of improvements to other lights along the Front Street corridor, just based on the way, because it allows, it's going to add more capacity for some of the vehicles through some of the intersections. Now, some of the intersections will need to be re-timed, and right now, we're going through the modeling, but we will be able to come back and show you exactly the benefits at each one of the, of the intersections. And in some cases, it's not getting better, it's just keeping up with the growth. So for each one of these locations, we have to go back and compare what happens if you don't do anything with what happens when you do something, and we had to at least show that it wasn't getting worse by, by so doing.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Sheldon, could you go up to the mic as well? And, and I would, and I'd like to keep you both up there.
Aw, man!
I want to say too, that I thought, I think the, the materials and the way they were put together and presented was very effective. Thank you for that. This is complex, and there's a lot of stuff, so it was a really good presentation. Sheldon, as you know, we have traffic analysis that shows that when there is, and if there were to be another overcrossing or undercrossing of I-90, then our transportation improvement plan works in the long run. This seems to suggest that, the one thing about this study is, it doesn't, and she, a comment was made how the Maple at Grade, kind of raising the I-90, doesn't have the effect on the interchange as good as the divergent diamond. That, that point was very clear. But I'm operating under the assumption that, that something like Maple at Grade raising I-90 does and would have a very big effect on other parts of the city, north and south. It may not have such a big effect as sought by the interchange, but... It may not have such a big effect as sought by the interchange, but we have a transportation plan, and we've done modeling with that crossing in there, that shows it's an essential piece for achieving kind of the level of service that we see we need in this 2040 timeframe. Did you comment on that?
Certainly. And you're absolutely correct. The project, the crossing of I-90 in the area of Maple Street, as Hilma showed it, has a very substantial benefit to the local circulation, north and south, and also has a positive impact to the local circulation, you know, on the north side as well as the south side of I-90 and that general area.
So, my ask then would simply be, even our modeling didn't have the diversion diamond design in the Front Street interchange. So, I hope that we consider kind of updating ours as well with the, for our entire city, what we've done for concurrency with this new design, because this is a pretty critical finding, and I'm glad to know that there appears to be a clear leading design to make a difference for the interchange. But it's really unsatisfying in that it doesn't, what we know to be a greater need requiring another crossing, it lessens the likelihood that as a result of improving I-90, that we will get this other benefit as well. So I think understanding these changing parts and this change of the interchange and what it may mean to, long-term, for our internal circulation is going to be very critical.
So, I appreciate that. As Hilma was saying in her presentation, while the primary solution to the interchange is the diverging diamond, that was what came out as the preferred alternative, the undercrossing or another crossing of I-90 in that one area of Maple Street, actually, while it provides a little bit more benefit to the interchange, it still provides a substantive benefit for the local circulation. So, both projects actually work in tandem, just as the city's local project, though, doesn't have as much of an impact on the interchange. But they both work in tandem to help improve the community's circulation.
Right. And of course, we can't do a Maple at Grade raise I-90 without help from WashDOT and FHWA, so.
That's correct.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
I just wanted to thank you, thank you Sheldon. Thank you for the presentation and coming in, and I just had a question in regard to Lacey and wanting to look and learn more about the diverging diamonds. How long ago did you say that that had been put in place? I'm wondering if there are any accompanying studies that talk about improvements in that area?
In the Lacey area? Yeah. So in the Lacey area, they did a very similar study to what we've gone through here. And I think that that project actually is under construction now, so it's not there yet. So there are models that will show you, if you go onto the DOT website, what it will look like when it's completed. But yes, very similar studies to what we are doing, and then additional modeling, like the one that we are embarking on right now, it was done and did demonstrate the benefits of that type of revision to the configuration of the interchange.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just wanted to better understand when we would have the next update.
The next update? I don't know. I do not have an exact date for that. I think that the intended goal from the DOT is for us to complete our work here, you know, by the end of the year, get some cost estimates, go through the modeling to verify then the extent of the benefits provided by the option that seems to be the preferred option right now, but we have to substantiate that with modeling. So I suspect that after the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, that there may be an opportunity for the council or the city to request another update.
Most likely, it's going to come as the report gets finalized towards the middle of 2019, and that'll present information there. So probably a presentation, brief one, about the final report.
Councilmember Goodman.
We have a very strong policy in the city regarding creating better mobility around our city for pedestrians and bicyclists, and so I was wondering how the, this interchange design works for that.
Actually, yes. What's a little unusual, well, everything about this interchange configuration is unusual, but the center of the interchange is reserved for pedestrians. So there is a walk right in the middle where pedestrians, bicyclists, and so forth and so on, travel through. So, yeah, right through the center here is where they go through, and then they cross the street and get back into the trail. So it happens at the center. Yeah. And they are protected through high barriers so that they can't really see the cars. It's not like they're afraid of walking through, that kind of sort of deal. But they're low enough so that it's not a safety concern in terms of like an enclosure, but high enough so that it does not bother them as they walk through.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. The study was done and the data collection was done, when?
So, we did the data collection at the end of 2017 and in January of 2018, so in terms of the actual traffic counts.
Okay. And Sheldon, was Fourth Street undercrossing open or closed at that time?
It was closed.
It was closed.
So, the numbers said earlier, about 30% of vehicles going through the interchange are not using I-90. That number is likely to go down when Fourth Street opens up again?
Yeah. We found that about, it was about a 5% difference. So we did actually do some calibration. We looked at some old counts for what was happening while it was open and compared that to when it was closed, and we found about a 5% differential. So, yeah. So we did account for that at that time.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, so just kind of following up on what Councilmember Winterstein said. The undercrossing part of that is, they say it's critical to some other parts of the city, and from the WashDOT standpoint, it really, you know, you've shown that there is an advantage there. At this point, it's not going to be full advantage, like, it feels like, well, there's an advantage, but not probably worth the money at this point to get there. I don't know where we are in that, but I want to make sure that that somehow continues on as something that WashDOT will continue, that we can work to, work towards that versus saying we're getting to an end here, that this, it's nice, but not quite nice enough to do, and we've got it taken care of with the, with the, with the Front Street entrance. So how can we make sure we continue that on through the future? That's, I guess, my bottom line.
Not sure whether there was a question in there.
Yeah, the question is, how do we keep that part going so that all of a sudden we don't focus on the diverging diamond and let the undercrossing just kind of fall to the wayside? Because we can't, as Paul said, we can't do that ourselves. It's a WashDOT project. And so how do we keep that on WashDOT's?
So, the city takes it upon itself to work with WashDOT and bring the stakeholders together to continue along with that project for the undercrossing of Maple. It is important to the city. WashDOT understands it is. It still provides a benefit to the I-90 system, and WashDOT has indicated their willingness to continue to work with the city on it, but the city's going to have to take a more proactive role to engage WashDOT and others so that they will take it on and will be partners with them.
Okay. So that's where we're saying, we have to take a more proactive role, is the critical words there on that. Thank you.
So, I have a couple, a comment and a couple of questions. So actually, a couple of years ago, got to actually drive in a DDI in Atlanta off of I, whatever, 285 or 45, whatever the loop is around the north side. And it's a little weird, in the same way that the first time you go through a roundabout is a little weird, but I didn't see any accidents. Which, the first question is, is there currently in the DDI's that are in place in the United States, an increased accident rate due to the sort of unique nature of the interchange?
Actually, the data is showing that there is a substantial decrease in accidents.
Great. The next question I have is around the benefit. So assumably, this score is high because it has a substantial impact on carrying capacity and flow time, or traffic, you know, times through interchanges and whatnot. Is there a way for us to see what the potential positive benefit of doing these things is in terms of, on the actual numbers?
Yes. I suspect that we will be able, we would, well, not suspect, I know that we'd be able to show the data once we complete the study. So as I mentioned, we did some limited amount of modeling along the way at some key locations, and it was static in nature, such that, well, what happens to this intersection and this intersection? What we are doing right now is that we're doing a full operational model where you're able to, it's a dynamic model. It takes a lot of detail and precision, and you'd be able to see exactly how it operates. And I suspect that if you were to have a second briefing or a third briefing, we would be able to show you those, so physically see how with and without it would operate.
Great. And my last question is, it looks like there's an even newer interchange idea called the double crossover merging interchange, which, they haven't actually been built yet, but it appears to have all the benefits of the DDI without necessarily some of the, some of the potential negatives around it. And I'm wondering if, since we're considering new types of interchanges, if WashDOT would be considering a DCMI as well as a DDI?
I think that right now, what WashDOT has embarked on is on the DDI. Should in fact, the modeling demonstrate that there's still some deficiencies, once the DDI is put in place, I'm sure that they'd be looking at additional tweaks and/or additional alternatives to better the deficiencies.
Okay. I was in necessarily thinking in terms of deficiencies. I'm just reading that supposedly the DCMI eliminates the disadvantages of weaving and of merging into the outside lane from which the standard DDI variation suffers. So, just seems like as long as we're willing to think outside the box at new kinds of interchanges, maybe we should consider that.
Right. And that option was not brought up to the table here, but again, as I said, if indeed this does not operate, for instance, the issue that you mentioned is weaving. Weaving really is predicated on the length from one location to the next. So basically, the point is, for instance, let's say these vehicles are coming on and they're turning left, and they are in this lane, in the left-side lane, but they want to go over here, and they want to cross over to the right so that they can go in this direction. What makes weaving a problem is the distance that you have in the amount of time in which you have it. So that may very well prove to not be a problem at this DDI, but should indeed it show up to be a problem, then I'm sure that we'd, the DOT would be looking at some other options to fix that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Hilma? Yes, Councilmember Hunt.
On this image of the diverging diamonds, there is a red spot indicated for the fish passage barrier status. Is that affected by the design of the diverging diamond, or that's an existing?
It's not. It's not. The footprint of the improvements are pretty close to what you see there in orange. So, yeah. So that's part of the reason why this option scored higher than, like I said earlier, the flyover option. It was because this one appears, we need to confirm this through modeling again, appears to provide the improvements with the least amount of physical impacts in terms of widening out roads or the such, or affecting the culverts that were just done, or the fish passage barriers that were just fixed.
Okay. So it didn't, in your initial model, it didn't seem to affect?
No, it does not.
Does it affect existing businesses? That was the other one.
It does not.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. Ms. Menes, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Just to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sheldon, anything more on this one?
I would. I'd like to, real briefly, probably in layperson's terms, kind of summarize what Hilma was saying in her detailed presentation and what it means to the city. What this interchange improvement does or could do when it's built is it improves the off-ramp flow for traffic accessing destination shopping areas both north and south of I-90. Certainly provides the regional transportation improvement that Hilma was speaking to, and it also improves the safety by reducing backups on the main line of I-90 facilitating, by facilitating the left-turn movements from the off-ramps. Just some points to consider or be aware of what this interchange improvement would not do. It doesn't really provide a significant local mobility improvement, as Hilma identified that that's not the purpose and need of doing the work on the interstate system. While it doesn't provide as part of the solution to the interchange, a second undercrossing, it does identify, though, that a second crossing does help the interchange and is still important for the local mobility of the city. And I think Councilmember Winterstein brought that up. A question was asked about Front Street congestion and Front Street. What this improvement does not do is it does not increase or decrease the traffic congestion on Front Street. It is still focused on the regional traffic through the interchange and on I-90. Some current policy directions that this council has and the city has taken about this project. This project is on the council's and the city's capital improvement program, and this is also important for safety and regional mobility. The I-90 undercrossing is on a capital improvement program by the city for the local mobility aspects. And as far as Highway 18 goes, on the legislative agenda, there's an item that the city council has expressed support for improvements along the SR-18. So, Hilma probably spoke a little bit about every one of those implicitly, but I just wanted to kind of put in layperson's terms what it means to the community so that we can all understand it better.
Should that, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Thanks, Sheldon. So, you hit on the no significant local mobility improvement, and of course, that's not the, WashDOT's, that's not their, that's not what they do to work on local.
That's correct.
Yeah. But you also said something that I didn't hear during the presentation earlier, and that was, it improves mobility or access to, I can't remember what you said, to destination shopping areas north and south of the city?
Yes. What it does is by providing the mobility through the interchange and the users of the interchange coming off the off-ramps, it helps them get off and move north to the commercial centers north. And what Hilma didn't bring up is that some of the data that they had actually indicates that the people that are coming off that interchange are actually stopping to do business and shop inside Issaquah before they continue on to their final destinations. The other component is, is that there is a substantive amount, and Hilma mentioned it, I think it was about 30%, that just go north and south through the interchange and don't really use it. While the improvement doesn't change that volume, it facilitates that movement so that people can actually come north and south and utilize the city services too. So it does help mobility through the interchange for those people that want to use it for local business and services.
Well, again, it sort of begs the question whether the traffic that is coming to, the traffic that is shopping here, if they would be passing through, if they weren't shopping here, or if they're shopping here because they're passing through. And the reason that that's an interesting question is because it has to do with our own local growth plans and zoning decisions.
And, yes, your local land use plans, the businesses that are here today, the businesses that are planned for tomorrow, the communities up in Issaquah Highlands, people come down Sunset Interchange, and they take that westbound off-ramp of Front Street, and they turn it, and then they turn it, and they go on Gilman Boulevard, and they eat or do whatever on Gilman. So there's a lot of uses that are going through the interchange, but there's also uses that are just continuing north-south through. But the improvement does help facilitate access into the city's area, north and south of I-90, which people can stop and use the facilities.
So I think that, and this is a comment, suggestion, that we have probably learned a lot from our own community from the study. a lot from our own community, from the studies and the traffic counts and the modeling that WashDOT has done. And so it would be my hope that we would, they would be able to share that with us and help us understand the data so we can help, help us learn the impacts of our local decision-making on traffic.
Other questions or comments? I have a couple. So the first question I have is, I see the proposed changes there. Would this, would there be rework down to the Front and Gilman intersection? Because I tell you that maybe southbound, there's only 200 cars, and it's 600 cars northbound. But as one of those people who occasionally tries to go south, the fact that there's about a 200-foot lane, right, in the right lane, and you have 200 feet to get in the left lane, or you're headed north on Gilman, and during the rush hour, that left lane is typically chock-full of cars, and so everyone sits on that freeway exit ramp, waiting for a space to open up so that they can go south on Front Street. Would there be work done on that area or some way? I mean, that particular thing is, to me, super, super frustrating aspect of that interchange at rush hour, and something that begs for redesign.
That's an excellent question. In the city's capital improvement plan, there is a project for the intersection of Front and Gilman, and that project is essentially queued up to be coordinated with these types of improvements. So it's difficult to do something now, knowing that you have something potential in the future. So these, this improvement would be coordinated with what could happen at the Front and Gilman intersection.
Great. Thank you. That's good to know. The second question is, so we're talking about Exit 17. How does Exit 15 compare in terms of, you know, we're talking about the traffic that heads south, that evidently is going to keep heading south, no matter what we do anywhere else? And a lot of it is at 17, but a lot of it is at 15, right? Highway 900, which is, you know, two lanes right, and if I had a nickel for every time that somebody in Lane 3 pulled all the way to the right to head south on 900, I would be a rich man. People don't seem to understand that. But do we, as a city, do we think that Exit 15 has a sense of urgency the way Exit 17 does? How do we, how do we view that as part of the city's overall relationship to the state and the feds?
I think Exit 15 does have issues, and I'm not sure they're as severe as the Front Street ones because they weren't, they're not really creating the backups onto the main line like they used to be, creating the safety issues. And I think there's a pretty large demand for the right-hand movements rather than the left turn movements relative to one another. I think Hema could probably speak better to that exit, since that was also included in their modeling effort, and because as part of the IJR, they have to look at the I-90 corridor and interchanges on either side of the subject interchange. But it doesn't seem to be as big of an issue as Front Street.
So you said there's not as much backup onto the main line at Exit 15 as there is on?
That's because they have more queuing space on the off-ramp. There's more queuing area. They have two lanes that go right and two lanes that go left, and an HRB lane.
My own experience, I would have guessed that there's more backup on the main line at Exit 15, even for those two lanes on the right, because the right, most of the people who are actually going to take the interchange as they were supposed to instead of going in Lane 3 and then cutting, cutting over, that Lane 4 backs up pretty far.
Looks like Hema's coming up to.
Sorry, you thought you were done.
Hema's coming to save me.
I think you're right. Our analysis did show that there, you know, that there's quite a few issues associated with that interchange. Unfortunately, those previous studies identified this one, and this is where the legislature appointed the study money for. It does not mean that there won't be any additional improvements and a similar study happening for SR-900. So this one was not necessarily intended to fix SR-900. We just got to make sure that it's not making it worse by what we're doing with Front Street. Hopefully, we can, you know, get some additional funding for, to do something similar at that one as well.
Well, we'll just have to talk to our state legislators. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. At this point, I'm going to ask that if anyone in the public wishes to speak on this issue, they are welcome to come up and take three minutes. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this issue? No? All right. Well, then, with that, if there's no other comments from the dais, and there are not, we're going to move on to ID 0333, Squawk-Tallis Community Connections, presented by Mary-Jo Debeck, Sustainability Manager, and Emily Kish from King County Metro.
Good evening, council members. I'm happy to be here tonight, Mary-Jo Debeck, and I'm not only representing sustainability tonight, but also our internal mobility team who have been involved with this project with us. My job tonight is to introduce Emily Kish with King County Metro, who's been our program manager, working with us with Squawk-Tallis project. But before I do that, I'd like to remind council that our transportation mobility team reached out through an application to King County Metro and asked for some help with our mobility issues in Issaquah. And our team identified the Squawk and Tallis neighborhoods because we've known for a long time that they are, you know, the topography and the hills make it very difficult for walk-and-bike programs, and they're pretty much underserved and not served at all by transit, and yet they're communities that are both in close proximity to our transit center. So King County Metro agreed with us, and they put us in the queue of working with them. We're excited about that. Before, and Emily will talk a lot about sort of how we are working through this project. But before I do that, really what I'm up here to do is to recognize and acknowledge the community stakeholder working group that has been working with us since we started this project. And while their names are up there on the board, and a few of them are here tonight, I really wanted council to know that without them, this project wouldn't be anywhere near as, as positive and productive as it's been. These guys are rock stars in the sense that they've met with us and been dedicated volunteers to come to our meetings. They've also connected with us in between meetings. They've challenged our assumptions. They've asked questions. They've provided recommendations and good input. They've been leaders in their community to represent ideas and thoughts with their community folks, and they've also been able to promote the project through surveys and connecting with others. So with that, I really wanted to acknowledge them. And I also wanted council to know that we've, through the course of working with them, have invited them to continue the dialogue with the city. And, you know, with our mobility master plan ahead, and with our strategic plan ahead, and with our, you know, future transportation advisory board, these folks are really dialed into representing transportation and mobility issues. And like our internal city team, they also understand that, you know, our mobility solutions aren't just service solutions that we propose, and they're not only infrastructure projects that we improve. Those are very important, but that it's really important to understand people and situations that they have, and choices that they make, and access that they have, and their lifestyles. And so without a really deep community voice and perspective, as we design and develop our community solutions for mobility, we won't get as far. And these guys have really demonstrated that they're in for the long haul to help make Issaquah a better place. So I just wanted to take the time to thank them and acknowledge their awesome work with us. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Emily, and I'll be over here on the side and help to support her through the presentation, but thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, folks. I'm Emily Kish. I'm with King County Metro. I was the project manager for the Squawk-Mountain and Tallis Community Connections project. As Mary-Jo said, we wouldn't be here without our stakeholders, so we really thank them for sitting it out tonight and showing their support for the project. So briefly, I'm just going to go over the program and the project process, and then we'll delve into the findings and recommendations and next steps. Some of you guys may be familiar with Community Connections. It was formerly the Alternative Services Program at King County Metro. It was established as a four-year demonstration program in 2015, 2016. It was approved for $15 million for the 2017-2018 budget. We, our program is funded by, guided by a few principles and priorities. Service reduction mitigation, that was a result of service cuts in 2014 that we suffered. Delivery against the five-year plan, so those projects were the result of some reinvestment and restructures throughout the county. And then also developing complementary services, and those projects were decided through a competitive 2017 and 2018 project selection process. So what are alternative services? So basically, we are providing mobility services to parts of King County that do not have the infrastructure density or land use to support traditional fixed-route buses. We worked with the community to identify transportation needs and develop transportation solutions. We create new services. We also leverage existing and emerging services on the market. We tailor all of our solutions to the communities in which we serve and work, and then we work with our community partners, our jurisdictional partners, to engage the community and then also make these projects successful. So as Mary-Jo alluded to, the Issaquah project was part of our 2017 competitive application project or process. It was selected among eight other pilot communities, and we received 16 applications for that, for that 2017 process, and it is a partnership between KC Metro and Issaquah. Again, our stakeholder working group, I just want to point out that we worked really closely with Issaquah staff to identify these stakeholders. It's really important for our process and King County Metro, not only to have residents in the area, but to also have representation from human services organizations that represent the interests of generally underrepresented groups. We also have an employer in the area that also has residents, so it was really important to have both sides of that stakeholder represented. All of our Community Connections projects have a three-phase outreach process. In our first phase, which is called our needs assessment phase, we work with stakeholders to localize our needs assessment, or also identifying ways for community outreach. We disseminate a needs assessment survey to the public or the community that we're serving, and then we take that information from the needs assessment, and we work with our stakeholder working group to articulate three to five key transportation needs that will carry us through the remainder of the outreach process. That's why that blue arrow is super long to the end. So we take those three to five key transportation needs, we take those back to Metro, we work internally with our Metro staff to brainstorm solutions to address those transportation needs. We bring those back to the stakeholders in Phase 2, and we say, hey, stakeholders, here are the solutions that we're thinking about. How do you feel about those solutions? And they say, all right, we feel good about those. We feel comfortable with them. Let's survey on them. So we put those solutions into our solution concept survey. We then send them back out to the public, and they give us their feedback on if they would use these solutions and how they might use these solutions. And then in Phase 3, we take that information, we share that information with the stakeholders, and then they make the recommendations for implementing those solutions. After the outreach phase, we have a few more phases and a few more arrows to get through for our project. So we have an implementation planning phase, and that's basically, great, we have these solution concepts, now we have to make them work. So we go back to Metro, we work with our internal staff, we might work with external partners, we work with our community, our jurisdictional partner, to develop these solutions into services. Some of these solutions are what we call sort of off-the-shelf solutions, so we've deployed them in other areas. Maybe they don't take so long to deploy a few tweaks, and we can put them on the road. Other solutions are brand-new services, and sometimes they take some time to create and deploy. After we feel comfortable with where they're headed and the services are ready to go, and the agreements with our partners are in place to deploy those solutions, we move into product rollout. So that's the time when we're really marketing our services, we're making sure that people know about them and will be using them. Once the first fare is paid, we start our baseline data collection. So that's a period of three months where we're gauging ridership. We're taking measurements on ridership, how are people using the service? After three months, we set our performance targets, and then we measure the service for a period of two years, and that's that pilot period. And the benefit of this pilot period is that we have the flexibility to change the service depending on how well it's working or how well it may not be working. So we can alter maybe hours of operation, or how many vehicles we have, or a service area. We have lots of sort of tools to work with during that process. So briefly, again, I'm just going to go through our findings of our different, of our outreach process, and then we'll get to our recommendations. So again, with the needs assessment, we had a needs assessment survey. So that was available during February of this year. We received 438 total responses, which is about 6% of the population of Squawk-Mountain and Tallis. Generally, what we found is that people have pretty good access to transportation options. Not surprisingly, most people drive. This is not surprising in any of our project areas. However, people are also walking and carpooling and taking the bus five days a week, which one might surmise as the work week, which is great. Most frequently visited destinations, Issaquah Common Shopping Center and Pickering Square. Most significant barrier to taking transit, challenges traveling between work-home and transit. Again, this echoes the objective of the city in this application and this process. Finding carpoolers was another significant barrier, which echoes sort of what we saw in people, the percentage of people who are actually carpooling, which is great. And then the top three things that would help people get around without driving alone, so not surprisingly, transportation service when I need it, that connects to transit or other local destinations. Access to destinations I can't currently get to on the bus. And then we had a tie for guaranteed ride home, cost, knowledge, and confidence in the transit system. So again, we took all that information, we shared it with our stakeholder working group, and we said, all right, let's, let's pin down these need statements that will help guide us through our concept, solution development, and then also what we decide to implement. So they said, mobility solutions that will provide frequent and reliable 24-hour service, solutions that provide education and assistance on how to access, pay, and use for people of all abilities, regardless of age and language, are equitable, that provide equitable access to community destinations and transit hubs, that are safe and accessible for all types of users, and that will facilitate, facilitate use of other modes of transportation. So moving into the Phase 2. So again, we took those need statements, we came back to Metro, we brainstormed some solutions, and we put those into a solution concept preference survey. So that survey was available this summer in July. We received only 4% of the population respondents. That is very typical of the second survey. It is longer, it is a little bit more nuanced, people might, will be less likely to take it, and we understand that. So the first question that we asked in the survey is, to what degree do people agree with the need statements that we have put forth? And we found a pretty high percentage of agreement for all of the need statements, and this is obviously in descending order. So we were pretty, we were pretty happy with that. And then I'm just going to briefly go through the solution concepts that we proposed and then take you into our recommendations. So the first solution concept that we developed was called the Community Transportation Coordinator. This person would serve as a transportation resource to folks in Squawk-Mountain and Tallis. They would oversee community connection services in the area and promote other transportation services. They would also assist community members with a range of transportation-related requests. So again, how do I pay for transit? How do I access different kinds of payment methods? How might I load a bicycle onto a transit vehicle? That sort of thing. Unfortunately, people did not find this very appealing, but they did understand that this person could explain mobility options, and they recognized that. While they did not, they weren't very concerned about the service, they also weren't very likely to use the service. The second solution that we proposed was called the Community Van. This is a volunteer-driven van for local group trips. Riders can join pre-scheduled trips, or they can request their own trips, and they do that by going through the Community Transportation Coordinator. That coordinator matches trip requests with volunteer drivers. These can be one-time trips, it can be recurring trips. The benefit of the van is that it's available 24/7. The benefit of the van is that it's available 24/7. So people did like the ability to travel destinations they can't easily reach by bus or transit. They also did not find this option very appealing. So again, while they were not very concerned about this option, they also were not very likely to use this option. Next, we developed a concept called Peak Ride. So this would be a paid driver commuter-based service that takes residents and workers from Squawk Mountain and Talis to the Issaquah Transit Center. This would be available during the work week, so Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., hence the peakness of the ride. It's also on a peak, so I thought that was pretty clever. We would have two vehicles, so two routes, one for Talis and one for Squawk, that would go through those areas and then to the Transit Center and back. They would circulate through each route about every 25 minutes, and I did a quick analysis of the transit times at the Transit Center, and it would capture a pretty big chunk of service during that amount of time. The vehicles are ADA-accessible, and they also accommodate bikes. They're standard Metro fare. Also, transfers would be accepted and issued. So people liked that they would not have to drive and find parking at the Issaquah Transit Center, which again, addresses one of the objectives of the application that the city provided. People did not have concerns about the service. There were a few folks who were concerned about the hours of service, and those folks wanted midday service, but this is really a commuter-based service, so take that for what it is. We did see a higher percentage of folks who are likely to use the service, so monthly, weekly, and daily. Oh, sorry, wrong button. The next service that we -- oh, yeah.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yes. Chris, I know we're looking at commuter service here.
Yeah.
But we have a lot of folks, particularly working up in Talis, that do not work standard commute.
Yep.
So did you take that -- those shifts into consideration? Because I've talked to a lot of folks that they would love to take the bus, but they can't get from there to there.
And I have that in the next solution.
All right, great. Thank you.
So the next solution is called On-Demand Ride. So this would provide Squawk Mountain and Talis residents and workers the ability to request rides through a mobile app or by making a phone call. Trips could be taken between Squawk Mountain and Talis and select neighborhood destinations, including the Transit Center. This would be offered during weekday off-peak hours, so the times that the peak ride is not operating, the service would be available. And then riders would pay a standard Metro fare. So folks like this flexibility. It would allow them to request trips when they needed them during those hours, and they wouldn't have to worry about driving and finding parking. By and large, people did not have any concerns about this service, and again, they were much more likely to use this service in addition to peak ride, monthly, weekly, and a smaller percentage daily, which we thought was pretty typical. We didn't necessarily think that people would be using this daily, but still is an option. So moving --
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Hunt.
Sorry.
Quick question about how the peak ride works. It goes along a standard route. Does it make standard stops just like a bus? You would have a bus stop, basically?
So that's something that we would discuss during implementation. We -- I did ask of the Stakeholder Working Group. You all may be aware that King County is experimenting with, so, demand-based trips and smart route trips. And so I talked with our operators at Hope Link, just understanding Squawk Mountain and Talis. They're hilly, they're curvy, and there are not a lot of streetlights. So safety, I think, is a concern. What we heard from the Stakeholder Working Group also is that it's shared with a lot of school bus routes. So that's another concern. The Stakeholder Working Group felt pretty strongly that stops were preferable over sort of a hailing service where a driver would just kind of come and pick you up wherever you were, close to where you were. I think we would explore that during the implementation planning, and it is something that we are concerned about and looking into. And I think as our other pilots at King County are developing and continuing on, we'll be taking that into consideration.
Oh, there's a tie. I'm going to go with Councilmember Ray.
So would this look a lot like the existing DART service, then? Just on a real limited route?
It could be. It could also be, you know, demand-based. So I think the opposite side, or I guess what's different from DART, is that we wouldn't have a flexible area associated with this. It would just be a routed service with a smaller vehicle, is what we're thinking right now. But similar, yes.
Good, thanks.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, so you said this would -- you just said routed. And then it sounds like this would be complementary to the peak ride, because this is -- the peak ride is at commute hours, and then this would be at non-commute hours.
The On-Demand Ride would not be a routed service. Sorry, I think we're talking about two different --
I'm sorry.
Yep.
All right.
So peak ride would be routed, is what we're thinking. On-Demand Ride would not be a routed service. It would -- and I can go into that in just a second. Can I just show you the recommendations first before -- Thanks. I mean, you've kind of jumped there, but. So the recommendations from the Stakeholder Working Group, when we presented the findings, were to move forward with Peak Ride and On-Demand Ride, to not move forward specifically with Community Van and the CTC. But they did recognize that there's interest in Metro and the city exploring, working together to identify other resources for providing and sharing information about transit options to residents. And I think what I heard from the Stakeholder Working Group was, this need exists outside of Squawk Mountain and Talis. And because this project specifically addressed Squawk Mountain and Talis needs, we really wanted to expand that beyond that, and this project would be limited in the ability to do that. So, kind of what we're getting into with implementation planning, you guys asked a lot of great questions, and those will be worked out. Those details will be finessed during the implementation planning phase. I do want you guys to know that these are two new services, so they will not be available in a few weeks or maybe even in a few months. I think by the end of 2019, they should be on the road. In implementation planning, again, we're looking at that new service-product development. We will be also embarking on our education awareness campaign, which is standard for all of our Community Connections projects. And what we found is that, by and large, a lot of communities that we work in don't even know that they have existing transit service, let alone they're going to have new services. So we have a big education awareness campaign to let people know, "Hey, you already have a bus in your area. Did you think about taking it one time?" And then also, "Hey, and we're going to have a lot of other new solutions coming online in the future." And then as those solutions hit that product rollout phase, we will be developing product-specific marketing campaigns for each of those different products so that people are inundated with as much information as we can provide them. And then we'll move into baseline data collection and performance measurement.
Councilmember Wintz.
Thank you.
Yep.
Emily, you just said that these services would be new and maybe may not be available to the end of 2019. What does that do to the two-year window, a pilot window?
The two-year window doesn't start until we start the performance measurement. So this is the community outreach, and the funding is dedicated, so it doesn't -- if you're worried about sort of that 2017-2018 demonstration, it doesn't affect that. Does that address your question?
Yeah, I think you said, no matter when it starts, it's still going to run a pilot for two years.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's as soon as it rolls out, or as soon as that performance measurement period, that's why it's set two years. That's as long as the pilot lasts. And then there are a few other alternatives. So once the pilot is finished, if it's performing well, the agreement can be extended for another year. If it's not performing well, we can sort of revisit and say, "Okay, well, maybe it didn't work out. Is there something else that we can do? Or is this the end of the pilot?" Also, as Metro is kind of growing up into its new position as a division, we're exploring ways to create these as main lines of service and what those might look like.
Councilmember Ramos.
So as you talked about, the fixed route being two different routes, one up each mountain.
Yes.
Right. And then the On-Demand one, would that -- normally, you think of that being one that could go either way, or two?
So the On-Demand Ride would likely be a contract with a rideshare service. So it wouldn't be a Metro vehicle. We would be looking to Lyft, or Uber, or other sort of ridesharing services, and then negotiating a contract with them.
Also Deputy President Bateese.
Thank you very much for this presentation. Really interesting work with the whole committee, and thank you for everyone who worked on this. In regard to the On-Demand, did you say that that was, I'm thinking particularly about seniors, did you say that was only app-based?
There would be a call center associated with that.
So you could call?
Yep. That is definitely a consideration, especially for equity and social justice concerns at King County, making sure that it's available and that there's a call center that's available in different languages as well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
So would the fare structure be different for the On-Demand than for the fixed route?
No. What we're looking into is a Metro fare. That was felt very strongly by the Stakeholder Working Group for equity concerns. Again, I don't know what this is going to look like. That will all figure itself out during implementation planning. So beyond that, I can't really say anything except that that's our goal and mission, to make it a standard Metro fare.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah. And so a lot of this, obviously, is geared towards a Transit Center to catching another bus and going somewhere else.
Peak Ride is.
Yeah, Peak Ride. And then, or when you're off-peak, you can still do the same thing.
On-Demand Ride would allow you to go to other local destinations as well, not just the Transit Center.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, I guess, that leaves my next question, is those folks that want to get around town during the day, that get off the mountain and they get to Transit Center, and then how would that tie into either the 200 service or expanded that or that? But you're saying if they come off the mountain, then they could go to anywhere else in?
We would identify other locations that they could use with On-Demand Ride.
All right. And then just to stretch that a little bit further, so that would be folks coming on and off Talis, but folks in other parts of the city would not be able to avail themselves of that service?
No, the project was just for Squawk Mountain and Talis.
Okay, thank you.
So it would have to be origin or destination.
Councilmember Hunt.
Earlier, I think you said that the performance metrics would be set after the baseline data collection. So does that mean you're basing the performance metrics on the baseline data? How does that work?
So we use our baseline data just to understand general ridership. We're also going to, for our performance measurement, we're going to use the information that we gathered from our survey to determine, or to, I guess, determine the metrics, but also to inform them in terms of likelihood to use the service. So we use that information. We also have other services that are out that are maybe similar to this, and so we can build off of those metrics in similar scaled areas. Obviously, we're not going to say, "Oh, Seattle's a great complimentary service. Let's use this performance metrics." So we would look to our other jurisdictions and other projects that we've used.
Yeah, that was actually, one of my other questions, was about if there, especially with the On-Demand, and it would be interfacing with Uber or another ridesharing existing service. So have you done that before? And then how does it work with the calling that you could call from different ways, but how do most people access that?
So most people act -- are you talking about performance measurement or just accessing the service?
Accessing the service.
Okay. So most people use apps, but we do recognize that there needs to be a call center, and we have, Metro has negotiated contracts with contracted providers to also provide call centers. Our new Ride2 service has a call center associated with it in addition to the app, and that information will be translated at a later date for that service. But that is something that's very important to us and recognition that not everybody can access things through data plans or smartphones, or just don't want to, so.
You'd use the Metro app, but an Uber car might, depending on how you?
It would be the provider's app. So Metro would not -- Metro does not develop apps, unfortunately. Yeah. It would be the service provider's app.
Okay. So how would it be different, then, from calling for one of those directly?
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
If it was Lyft, for example, how would it be different than calling a Lyft?
So --
Just calling a Lyft.
Okay, so there are a couple of different ways. We can have a verification code that the person receives. There's also a different platform that we can use. So there are business accounts that we can leverage, and then the person would have that information and would say, "I'm calling from this place. I want to use this account to take this trip." Okay. Sorry, does that make sense?
I may have a similar question.
Okay.
I'm sitting in my house. I can just call Lyft or Uber or any of the -- I guess not call, people use apps.
It would be a call center, and then they would have a dispatch, yes.
Yeah. How is that -- I can do that today.
Yep.
Right? How will that be different when the service is in place?
So it would be a Metro fare, so you would be paying less. Also, there might be a different -- either we use a different account, or we have a validation code, and that's how you would pay. So for instance, there are some employers in the area who provide their employees with discounted rates using rideshare applications. And they either have a promotional code, or they have an Uber-for-business or Lyft-for-business account, which that person downloads and then requests those rides through that account.
And you'd also be able to get transfers, or no?
Not with -- no, not with On-Demand Ride.
Gotcha.
At least as I understand -- I don't think so.
Okay.
Other questions?
Great.
That's your whole presentation?
Yep.
Well, thank you so much for coming today.
Unless you have anything else?
It's a fun new world, and again, the stakeholders have provided some really awesome recommendations, not just through this process, but to the rest of our --
Oh, yeah, can you come to the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, this is kind of, you know, the new endeavor for our communities, and just the engagement with the community has been awesome. And just the idea that we're going to have chronic feedback about how this works as a tested pilot, and that we've got a great partnership with King County Metro to continue looking at sort of these options. I think one thing Emily didn't bring up was that discussion that happened is two neighborhoods that are both on hills, yes, but they are also very different in some of their characteristics. And there's nothing to say that one size of this sort of project fits all. So through that testing and evaluation period, it'll be really interesting to see sort of the use of the selected recommended options. And then working with Metro to see if we can kind of shift, maybe it's On-Demand for one of the communities, and then maybe it's more of the peak service for the other. And those kinds of discussions are still yet to come, to see how the performance metrics turn into sort of solutions that are best suited for those communities. So it's an exciting time, and again, thanks to the Stakeholder Working Group.
I do have one last comment, because I think my colleagues would be really upset if I didn't mention this. The names that we put in the Solution Concept Survey for these solutions may not be the names that the solutions are actually named when they're on the road. Metro is trying desperately hard to streamline our naming conventions. We're getting a little out there with a lot of our names, and so we're trying to really simplify it for the community's sake. So just be aware, it may not be Peak Ride when it comes on the road, or it may not be On-Demand Ride when it's available, but it will be a name that people understand and get.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you both. And any other further questions or comments? We'll move on? All right. Thank you again. With that, we're going to move on to ID 0338, King County Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan, our last item for the evening. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. I had said earlier I was going to take public comment. If there's anybody who'd like to make public comment on this issue this evening, you're welcome to come to the microphone. All right? With that, we'll move on, but thank you for reminding me. So we have Micah Bonkowski with our Sustainability Coordinator, and Pat McLaughlin from King County Solid Waste.
Good evening, councilmembers, Administrator Moon, and audience members at home. As Councilmember March said, I'm Micah Bonkowski with the City's Office of Sustainability. And tonight, I have with me Pat McLaughlin, the Solid Waste Division Director for King County Solid Waste Division. And tonight, some, just a really brief intro before I pass it off to Pat. This is a high-level look at some significant parts of the Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, and it's to assess council's interest in hearing more in advance of the adoption process where you'll be asked to vote in spring of 2019. And that's pending adoption by the King County Council of this comprehensive plan, and it's in front of King County Council currently. So a little bit of brief background. This is similar, kind of, to the strategic plan process that the city is going through right now, in that this sets the tone for the work that the King County Solid Waste Division is going to be doing over the next six years and into the future with the solid waste disposal system in the region. The city represents a member of the Municipal Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, and that's part of the way that we inform this process and this comprehensive plan. We've been working with the county through several drafts of the plan for the last several years, and Pat will probably go into the timeline a little more. There was an open house in Isidora at the King County Library Services Center in February with the first draft of the plan that went out to the public. The administration commented on that first draft of the plan in March, and our comments were mostly around maintaining our recycling and greenhouse gas goals that the city has committed to, as well as that current draft not recommending a future disposal option out of the three options that were discussed in the plan. So the city and several other cities and stakeholders had asked that the Solid Waste Division make a recommendation as a part of this plan and not kick that decision down the road. Again, like I said, the plan is in front of the county council now, and then, let's see. Oh, those comments were heard by the Solid Waste Division, and the plan has been updated and does make a recommendation, which, again, Pat will go into this evening. The next steps, oh, and I also wanted to note, after our discussion a couple months ago about recycling markets and some of the issues that were going on there, that's not specifically addressed very much in this plan because of the timeline of the process that this plan had already gone through when some of those issues came up. So there is some mention of the recycling markets and some of the region's response to it, but it's not specifically called out in this plan, nor are solutions to kind of the upheaval in the recycling markets part of this solid waste comprehensive plan. The next step is if the King County Council adopts, cities have 120 days to act, and at that point, we'll put it in front of the council again to make a recommendation. And again, this presentation is to sort of assess, to give you a brief overview and then assess your interest in hearing more about it in different council work sessions heading into the spring. With that, I will turn it over to Pat McLaughlin of King County Solid Waste.
Thank you, Micah, and thank you for inviting me here this evening, and thank you for, as Micah had mentioned, we've been in collaboration benefiting from your city's input for a few years now, as the region has sought to update its Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. The last time this plan was updated was 2001, so it's long overdue. There's been significant changes in our region since 2001, as you obviously know, and you have had an amazing ambassador at the table in Micah, representing your voice and helping to influence the policies and framework that are represented in this plan. So we're thankful for the leadership he's provided, and on behalf of your city, we're thankful to be in partnership with you as we manage solid waste and, more importantly, recycling, because most of the materials that we are dealing with are recyclable, not garbage. We have a great recycling rate, we'll talk a little bit about that, but there's some tremendous opportunities going forward to recycle even more. The easy choices have been made, however. So we have three areas that I wanted to focus on this evening as just setting the stage. I'm going to try and go through the slides relatively quickly so that if you have specific questions, that we have time to engage in that, but I'll also try and keep my eye contact with you. Stop me at any time for questions or clarification. But the three areas I wanted to focus on, and they're really representative of the key policy areas that have the most significant changes in this plan update, is around disposal, transfer services, and then recycling itself. As a baseline, it's important to understand what we're forecasting in terms of tonnage, because that really is driving decisions around what we have to plan for capacity, whether it's capacity at our transfer stations or capacity at our landfill. And the chart in front of you, it's a little busy. What I want to draw your attention to first is the yellow line, or the golden line at the very bottom. That has been our planning assumption. It was our forecast that we created back in 2016. It's been the basis of our current rate structure and activities, but we updated it as part of this comprehensive plan, and it's a good thing that we did because there's been some significant growth. Now, we could take a variety of assumptions relative to population and economic projections. If we took the most aggressive look, then that top dashed line would be the new tonnage forecast, a very significant jump over our current planning assumptions. We could take a slightly more conservative approach, and that's the gray dashed line, and really where we landed was somewhere in between. So we've assumed some moderate population growth, as well as a moderate recession over the next planning horizon, and this becomes the basis for some of the policy decisions and recommendations within the plan. The most time-sensitive decision that we have to make is around disposal. We're very fortunate to be in partnership with your city. We have an inter-local agreement that has a requirement of the county to provide you with a disposal option through 2040. However, I will run out of capacity at the landfill in less than 10 years. This isn't the first time that we've reached such a milestone. We've added capacity in the past, and that remains an option, but if we take no action, we'll reach capacity in less than 10 years. So we've looked at three different options as the next disposal service here in our region, and one would be to add capacity at the landfill. I'll talk about what that looks like in a moment. We could also export the waste to an out-of-county landfill using the rail system. That's what the city of Seattle does, Snohomish County as well. We also looked at the option of building a waste-to-energy facility. All three of these have differing impacts financially, environmentally, and from an implementation risk perspective, and I want to talk about those as well. But the key to remember is we have less than 10 years to not just choose that solution, but to implement it and have it ready and standing by. In the course of developing the plan, there was a tremendous amount of analytics. This is a oversimplified picture for the purposes of this initial discussion. In the plan is additional data, and in the draft plan that went out for public comment earlier this year, there's even more substantial data and appendices that you can drill into, and we would be happy to do that with you at any future date.
I think you have a question here. Council President Batiste.
Sorry, if you're about to, thank you for the presentation. If you're about to get to this, that's fine, we can do that. Could you just explain waste-to-energy facility?
Absolutely. We, and I think this is a really important question, so thank you for asking it. Waste-to-energy could mean a lot of different things, and in fact, we are harvesting energy from our waste now. I'll get back to that in a minute. In this context, we hired some independent consultants to advise the county on what would be the best-fit technology under this category of waste-to-energy, because there's a lot of, what does it mean? And through that study that we conducted last year, the suggested technology was called mass burn. All right, so what this is, is an incinerator. You would take your waste, put it into this incinerator, it would destroy the waste in a controlled, contained cylinder, if you will, and in that process, of course, generate a lot of heat, which you use to create electricity. That's the energy that is created in that process, and so it's a thermal destruction process, and what is left is ash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I saw a chart, at least somewhat similar to this, at SCA a few months ago, and I had a, I had a concern then, and I still have a concern, which is, as somebody who works in science, as my day job, one of the things you try to flag is what the state of the science is, and when I see estimates that are two orders of magnitude different, like, that's like saying my car either gets four miles per gallon or it gets 400 miles per gallon, right?
Yeah.
It's like, that tells me that the miles per gallon doesn't work very well. So I have concerns when I see just the vastly different waste-to-energy greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you for bringing that up. So, and that's a very, you know, so we looked at this in a variety of ways. We looked at the financial implications, we looked at the environmental implications, we looked at some of the implementation risks, even recycling impacts. And so, building up to that, you can see that, and if I may, just, I'll start with the costs. So this is not the total tipping fee. Right now, our tipping fee's about $135 a ton, so when your hauler drives across a scale at a transfer station, they're paying about $135 a ton. About $39 of that pays for the disposal cost of the work, right? Because the other money is paying for transfer stations, is paying for outreach and programs and the sort. But for, what's it cost to run a landfill? Looking forward in about 2029, it's going to cost about $41 a ton, right? Putting it on a rail, about $55 a ton, and a waste-to-energy facility, about $136 a ton. Why so much more expensive? Primarily the capital expense of the facility that is offset, and what's reflected in that $136 is an offset of that energy. That energy has value, and so we're selling that energy and applying it to a net $136. We're also getting some revenue from some of the recycling. Interestingly enough, you can sift through ash and recover metals that would have otherwise got buried. The sale and revenue for the recyclables also helps to bring that cost down to the 136 mark that you see. But let's talk about the greenhouse gas models, because I think Councilmember March brings up a really interesting question. How can we have such a range of differences in any of these models? You'll see that in the first two columns, which are really landfilling models, whether you're landfilling it locally or landfilling it somewhere else, the landfills have actually a negative number. The parentheses are indicating removals of greenhouse gases in one of the models, and then positive, 95,000 metric ton equivalents in the other models, right? So pretty big swing, and even more drastic if you look at the waste-to-energy, you know, 12,000 to 80,000 in one range, up to 1.2 million in another model. So the answer, okay? And if I may, I'll use your own example. I would, you can use the miles per gallon as one model, right? So if you wanted to know what the miles per gallon of your vehicle was, you would use that measure, right, MPG? But if you wanted to know what your total impact was, why did you buy that hybrid vehicle? And what about the fossil fuels that you have displaced as a result of that? And what are the other impacts associated with making that choice? You're looking at a life cycle, you're looking at beyond your immediate activities. And so these two different models, and these are the models that our regulators use, so the Environmental Protection, EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, has two models. One is a life cycle model, and that is the first one that's listed, right? It's called the warm model, and it looks much beyond what's happening in the immediate activities, but looks at the displacement beyond where that, say, disposal is taking place. The other, the annual greenhouse gas emissions, that is an inventory of what happened that year at that facility with those specific activities. So they're very different measures, used for different reasons, and so you wouldn't use them to compare to each other, but you could use them to compare against other applications. So you could use it to say, how does rail compare to export, or rail compared to local landfilling or compared to waste-to-energy? But you wouldn't use these two models to compare to each other, because it would draw that same kind of confusion.
And then my other question is, why, incineration is very popular in Europe, including some places that we think of as environmental and progressive, like Denmark and Sweden and the Netherlands and Germany and France. So why is it so popular over there, but clearly, you know, we're, you know, the conclusion of this slide is don't do waste-to-energy? So what's the difference?
Well, I can't, I don't, I don't live in those other countries to speak. I have been in those countries, but I think it has been a longstanding practice, and I think it's been socialized. I think waste-to-energy works. There's no question about the science of it. I also believe it's safe. I think there's a lot of fear around it, I get that, right? But it does work, and we're seeing projects in the U.S. grow. So the most recent significant project was in 2015 in Florida. I think the reasons that we don't see more waste-to-energy projects, part of it is around the fear factor, I believe, right? And I think that can be managed. Part of it, and this is a big part of it, is around the expense. It is more expensive to do. Now, having said that, we have the responsibility to look beyond just finances. I think that is an element that we have to manage, but we have to look at the environmental impacts, we have to look at the societal impacts as well. So, you know, it's not a, it's not a one-dimensional decision, and I think that the cost has made it more difficult perhaps to be applied, but I think, like anything, as technology evolves, that can make a difference. Here's the other thing, though, is that even in Florida, how come it's, how come it's working and successful in Florida, but not on this coast? Well, our cost of energy is very different. So one of the benefits that, because we could just duplicate that Florida plant, and if it worked there, why wouldn't it work here? The offsets are going to be a little bit different. The cost of energy in Florida is very different than the cost of energy here. Our hydropower is very, very affordable, so we don't benefit from those same kind of offsets. Now, that could change. Another thing that could change is, in our state, waste-to-energy is not recognized as a renewable energy. Well, renewable energy has a premium value to it, right? So I think there are things that could change in the markets, or even in the legislature, that could make a proposition like waste-to-energy more acceptable, either in this region or others. But I think those are some of the things that are in play.
Thank you for that very comprehensive answer.
You're welcome, absolutely. That's what, that's what I'm here for.
Counselmember Winterstein.
I do want to thank you for that as well. Following your comments closely, and you did talk about the cost, and yet, like Tola's initial comment, it's not just the cost. I look at those numbers, and life cycle greenhouse gas is higher. Annual greenhouse gas emissions is higher significantly for waste-to-energy. So it's, I didn't quite follow your logic in that, well, yes, it's more expensive, but it's got these other, it still compares well when you look at the other measures. I don't think it does compare well by you look at the other measures. And then, you mentioned a couple parameters that actually aren't on your slide, such as like the cost recovery for, like, you know, for reselling the energy, for example. So I heard your words, the data seems to conflict a little bit, and maybe your slide needs a little bit more of your other measures in there to tell that story more completely.
Thank you. To clarify, first of all, my, the point I was trying to make is that I think that waste-to-energy can work and is, and can be a responsible disposal option. It's not the one that I'm recommending for the region at this point in time, but I'm not, I don't want to confuse that with saying waste-to-energy should never be considered, because I think there are circumstances where it can make sense. The financials do reflect the offsets from the recycling revenues, as well as the energy revenues. But sorry if I was unclear in terms of my perspective. What we are recommending, what the executive has recommended, which I think is the most important, is that when you look at the options, because, again, we don't want to just look at the options as individual solutions, we have to look at, well, what's happening in our region right now? We have an asset in Cedar Hills that is available to us at a lower cost, a lower risk of implementation, and a lower impact to the environment, and we think that as a next step, that is the right step. It has a limited value to it in that, we think this is really the last bite at the apple. I have to move buildings in order to develop this final cell, so I really am, I am running out of land, but that, here's what it does do, is it builds us a runway, right? That could give us capacity, and you have to go back to that forecast chart, it depends how well we recycle, it depends what happens to the economy, but basically, if we build this final cell, you know, we're going to get up to maybe 20, 40, maybe longer if we design the cell differently, maybe a little bit less if we don't recycle as well as we hope. But that gives us a runway, and we're going to need that runway to figure out, well, then what? Because we won't have local landfilling after that. It will either be an out-of-county solution of some sort, be it landfilling or waste-to-energy or some other local solution, and I think we need the time and the benefit of that runway to figure it out. And maybe that next, next solution is waste-to-energy. Maybe it isn't. Maybe it's going to be rail to a landfill or some variation thereof.
Counselmember Ramos.
Yeah, so on the greenhouse gases, go back to that slide a little bit, and mainly, that is coming from, I'm assuming you're burning that with a fossil fuel, some sort of natural gas or something, is what you're incinerating everything with. You didn't quite mention that. So that's where that greenhouse gases is coming from, and then that heat is as much as possible captured back into.
Yeah, the fuel is the garbage itself. The garbage is, becomes its own fuel, and it's that incineration process that has natural emissions associated with it that are generating the metric ton equivalents of CO2.
Okay. And then just to bring up, and, you know, I saw you earlier a couple weeks ago, but, and also considering the location... and also considering the location of this facility, which is in the middle of King County, our most populous county in the, in the state, and having a facility of that nature, and the impact to, to the local area, which is just south of here, and a lot of those folks consider it as quite their home, even though they're not in the city limits. So I haven't heard any talk of that, about the other things that, you know, just the natural impacts of a disposal. And I know we take care of that a lot better than we used to, but there's still going to be all the various, you know, problems with landfills that we always have had. So how are those pieces brought in with the environmental effects of just doing that as we do in this part in King County, in a very wet county, which makes it even more difficult?
I appreciate you raising that. I, you know, I mentioned in one of my opening slides, all the easy choices were made, and this is especially true here. Either one of these three options have risks and challenges to them. And certainly, expanding or maximizing the current landfill is no exception. We would have to go through a CEPA process and a permitting process. The community has already expressed clear concern over the idea of expanding that. And we need to be responsive to those concerns and make sure that they're well informed of what we're doing to mitigate impacts and, and the sort. So that's certainly a challenge. I want you to know the risks associated with rail are not capacity at those landfills. There's lots of capacity at the out-of-county landfills. There's probably adequate capacity in the local rail yards. It's the space in between, it's the rail service themselves that are already reaching constraints. And there's some unknown cost that will be applied by the rail handlers at some point to address those capacity constraints. That's not reflected here. So there's some risk about the reality it would be competing with Seattle and Snohomus County on rail yards that are railways that are already constrained. And I've been contacted even in this last year to take waste at Cedar Hills because it couldn't move on the rail. We didn't end up having to do it, but it's a number of times that's happened, so. And then the challenge really with waste of energy is the siding process. There's a lot of public education that would be necessary to help people understand that these operations are safe and, and they do, they do serve a purpose, but there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of fear about them. But the other thing to be aware of is the size of the plant that's necessary. If you go back to that tonnage chart, you know, boy, we've got just a robust region that's growing, and that's exciting in many ways. But it would, it would require a plant that handles 5,000 tons per day. To put that into perspective, we handle about 2,800 tons per day now. So it's almost twice the amount of garbage that we'd have to process. And there isn't a plant in Denmark or in Germany or anywhere in the world that is this big. This would be the biggest plant in the world. Doesn't exist. Now, there is a plant in Shenzhen, China, and one in Dubai that is being designed that would be of similar size, but today, there's not a plant of this size. I think that's just something to be aware of. It's a pretty significant volume. And I think there's risks when you, when you're, when you're doing that.
Councilmember Hunt.
On this slide with the, I'm trying to reconcile the annual greenhouse gas emissions and the life cycle greenhouse emissions. So why, why would it be, well, what's the factor that's resulting in a net sequestration of greenhouse gases for the landfill? And then also, why is it different if it's transported to a landfill versus not in the life cycle? And then my last part of that question would be, why is it exactly the same annual greenhouse gas emissions? I would think there would be some associated with the transportation.
Yes.
Emissions associated with transportation.
So, and you almost, almost answered your own question, right? So I think you're, I think you're right on the cusp, but this is very confusing stuff, and I think you actually understand it better than you realize. That, that transportation is a great example of why the out-of-county landfill is less beneficial than the local landfill. So Cedar Hills, 131,000 removal, that's a good thing, right? I'm going to explain the removal in a moment. But because it's being transported a few hundred miles, we, we lose some of that benefit in the out-of-county landfill. Why is there, why is that a negative, though, is one of the questions you asked? This is a life cycle, and what these landfill operations do, what we do at Cedar Hills, let's talk about what happens locally, is we are capturing that landfill gas, and we're removing the impurities of that gas to create clean natural energy, and we're putting it right back into the pipeline, right? So we are, we have waste of energy happening right now, enough energy to heat 19,000 homes a year. And what happens is that that clean energy is now offsetting fossil fuels, right? And so when you're looking at the life cycle impacts associated with the Cedar Hills operation, we're actually, we have net greenhouse gas reductions as a result of that. And that's what's reflected in that life cycle. The reason it's also a little bit less in the out-of-county landfills, part of it's the transportation, part of it is we have a very unique landfill gas facility. It's the biggest of its type in the, in the nation. And we also have operational practices that go above and beyond the regulatory requirements in terms of how and when we capture that landfill gas. And we did not assume those same exceptional standards would be in place at an out-of-county landfill, because they're not typically. And so that's, again, some of the differences that you're seeing there. Did I just raise more questions for you?
No, that answered part of it. And the, so the last thing would be, how are the emissions the same when one involves transportation?
Well, thank you. And so for the, the annual greenhouse gas, that is purely focused on what's happening at the landfill. It pays no attention to how the waste got there. And it pays no attention to the off-site impacts. It's just what's happening in terms of waste decomposition and the emissions associated with it.
Other questions?
All right, this second. Okay, and I'll, so we have, I think we've covered this. The executive, based on this kind of discussion and this kind of mental arm wrestling, has recommended that we take advantage of the lowest cost option, which is development of Cedar Hills, allowing us to continue to manage our waste locally, have the best environmental impacts. It's also a position that's been supported by both our advisory committees and, and many independent cities have, have weighed in to that same regard. Transfer was the other point of, of policy area that is in need of, of development, particularly in the Northeast, where we have the Houghton Transfer Station. It's a 1960s era station. It has been on the blocks for replacement for over 25 years, but we haven't done it. And so our task was to identify options for how to best serve the Northeast. It's one of the fastest-growing parts of our county. And when you look at the station itself, one thing to be aware of is that this Houghton Station, serving one of the fastest part, fastest-growing parts of our county, it's the third busiest station, no matter how you measure it. If you measure it by tonnage, it's the third busiest. If you measure customer count, it's the third busiest. It's a busy station. It also recycles the least. There's a reason for that. There's just very limited opportunity at this station to host recycling. We have a little bit there, but as you can see, it, it barely registers in terms of what it's, now, Factoria is listed there as well. That's because Factoria used to have no recycling. We, when this data was collected, we had just opened the new Factoria Station. When we update this, I think Factoria will be probably maybe second or third in line in terms of volume. But we're not doing very well there, but that's not the only failure we have. There are some core service elements that the region had identified in our transfer planning work. In terms of being able to handle the tonnage, handle the customers without off-site impacts, right? We don't want lines leaving the station. Compacting the waste. By compacting the waste, we have a third fewer trucks on the road because we get so much more in the back of a trailer. Recycling, as we mentioned, being able to service the customers on time and having emergency storage. Well, Houghton fails all those criteria. We, we don't do any of that, right? Very limited recycling, but, but fails against the full suite that's expected. So there's an equity issue that comes along with this as well. The constituents in this region are paying the same price you are, right? They're paying the same price everyone else has. In fact, their, their fees have been used to rebuild the other stations. But they are left in a very busy urban area with an open-air station that does not have the same environmental controls for noise, dust, and odor. Again, they don't have compaction, so they have a lot more trucks than is necessary. And they just don't benefit from the same kind of service levels that we can provide in a modern facility. So to address the service and the equity issues, the executive has recommended that we focus on delivering siding and delivering a new Northeast station to that region and moving forward with what's really been in the plans for over 25 years. And the last area I wanted to hit with you is recycling, and I appreciate the importance that this does have to your region. You know, in many respects, we have a lot to be proud of. We have some of the best recycling rates in the nation. And as you also have learned, there's, there's a lot of global issues that are making some of the markets very difficult for us. So the plan, as it's presented, emphasizes the need to continue to recycle, and I got some data to share with you. And as Micah had pointed out, it leaves a menu of options to the cities. It actually produces a roadmap of how to move recycling substantially beyond where it's at. And there have been some new task force activities of recent months to address some of the challenges that the China policies have, have produced. But here's what I really want to point out to you. As we started to look at this, and I pulled together some of the data, on one hand, very exciting to know that we lead, we're, we don't lead, but we're in that, in that leader's pack in terms of recycling rates at about 54%. But it actually hasn't changed much for quite some time. You can see this, that green bar is relatively flat over the last decade or so. But something happened. Back in the 90s, we were at like 19% in this region, and we got together and, and unified our policy. See, the challenge that we're facing right now, and the reason that this is such a flat recycling rate, is because depending on where you live, work, and play, the recycling rules are different. So you recycle one way in Issaquah, you recycle another way in Renton, you recycle another way in unincorporated King County, and you had a different way in Sea-Tac, right? Because in our infinite wisdom, and I'm including the county in this, we've, we've believed that we've known what's best or needed or interesting for our, for our communities. We've tried to create and be responsive to our community interests, but we've actually created, we have 37 cities in the unincorporated areas, we have 38 different ways to recycle. And guess what? All those recycled materials go to one of three different material recovery facilities. They're not going to 38 different places. All those materials are going to the same place, so we're kind of fooling ourselves. And worse, we're fooling, we're making a very confusing operation for our constituents who want to recycle and are trying to recycle, but they're contaminating the materials in the process, right? So we really need to unify the approach. I want to also point out the importance of to continue recycling. When we hear about the differences in China's policies and the impacts to our region, they are important, but I think we're overreacting as well. Because China's policies and the restrictions they've implemented, which are good restrictions, I'm glad they've done it. I think they've done it for the right reasons. But they, they only impact 14% of our recyclables, right? 86% of our recyclables are not impacted by it. 86% of our recyclables have robust markets and are being processed, some of them very locally, like our organics, right? So it's important not to overreact, because what we're hearing from some communities is, oh, well, if China's not taking our recyclables, why bother recycling? And the reality is, because most of the stuff never went to China, right? Most of the stuff is being processed domestically. So we need to keep recycling. The key is keep it empty, clean, and dry. And, you know, yeah, we want it in the right bin, but if, if everything in the recycle bin was empty, clean, and dry, we have a much better chance at minimizing contamination. And so there's a new website that's available on King County's website. We've actually provided that through the advisory committees. It's called the Recycle Right website. And we have now created for you messaging that you can use for your Twitter, your Instagram, your Facebook accounts, your city newsletters, and it's all content-specific, whether it's graphics or, or short messages, so that we can get collectively, get this messaging out. And the, the next work that's ahead of us, though, is to try and tackle a more unified and harmonized way of recycling, to make it easier so that no matter where you live, work, and play, the recycling rules are the same. And I think that's the, the challenge ahead of us. We're in this adoption process. As Micah mentioned, this comprehensive plan has gone through a public review. It's benefited from your own insights and comments, and is now before our Regional Policy Committee and our Committee of the Whole. And will probably not have substantial momentum until January 2019. And we hope that in the first quarter, our council will complete its deliberations, adopt the plan, and then it turns over to the cities, and that's where your action comes in and is very important. What's important to know is that once our council adopts the comprehensive plan, a time clock starts to tick, 120 days. And it's the cities that take action during those 120 days that will determine whether or not this comprehensive plan is adopted. Action meaning they either accept or reject the plan through a city resolution. So it's important to be one of those cities and make sure your voice is reflecting your, your choices during that 120-day period. And it is the populations represented by the cities taking action that will then determine, is it accepted and approved or not.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
Thank you for the presentation. I, one of the questions that I had, it sounds like when you were, the tonnage forecast chart that you talked about in the beginning, it sounded like it had been nine years since the last comprehensive planning and review. Is that correct?
Actually, it's been 18 years.
18 years?
17 years.
Okay. And so with this chart and looking at the tonnage, with what's happened with China and the 14% as presented here, does, does that, does this chart take that into account?
It does. The good news is that even during, we, for about two months, we had a very challenging transition period because China literally just shut their ports and started rejecting shipments of these imports. And so there's a big scramble for about two months. And our local processors started to stockpile materials and try to figure out where they, where they were going to go. None of those materials came to the Cedar Hills landfill. So we didn't, we did not end up disposing of, of materials during this time. And since that time, our haulers have found their markets, right? So they're, these, these materials are being redirected to India and to Vietnam, some up in the British Columbia, there's a mixed plastics processing facility there. So now, it's very difficult because China was a very large, single source to sell to, and we're now having to push them elsewhere. But we're not landfilling the materials. And so it hasn't, it hasn't impacted that. What we have done, however, is we've taken a more conservative assumption in terms of what our recycling rates are. So what I mentioned is we're at a 54% recycling rate presently, and that's about two percentage points better than it was back in 2016. However, we did not carry forward that improvement here. This is assuming that we stay at that 52%. So we built in a buffer that says recycling doesn't get any better than it is right now. In reality, it's already a little bit better, but I don't know that it's going to maintain that. So we have some buffer here that if recycling rates got a little bit worse, that's, that's kind of reflected here as well.
Follow on?
Yes, thank you. So, and I was wondering, just within the planning, right, right along those same lines, was there discussion around, because I know that this has all happened very recently. So within this new planning that you've been doing, was there discussion about some of those other markets potentially shutting down?
So there, in the plan development, no. We didn't talk about this in the context of China sort. We talked about this in the context of, boy, we have been flat on our recycling for so long, and although we have the, you know, aspirational plans of how to move that, we don't have the policies don't have the policies and commitments behind it. So even though China Sort hadn't hit, we had the concerns around having recycling assumptions more aggressive than what we've really historically used. So it was really just using this kind of planning information that caused us to be rather conservative in our recycling assumption. And then China Sort hit, and it kind of basically complemented our assumptions in that we, you know, it didn't, still didn't cause more tonnage to come our way, but it was an example of what could happen, I suppose, that if markets did fail and it did end up in our landfill. I think, given that, again, that's a 14% of the pie, it would be representative in our forecast.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, just, again, kind of following up before, and just looking at, remembering that this is in our backyard, so to speak, and how that affects folks in our local community. It is a piece of, you know, infrastructure we need. We need to get rid of our garbage and how that's handled, and the history of the facility that's been there since when? When was that?
1965.
1965. So it's been there a long time. It's, a couple of times, if I remember right, was going to hit capacity, and somehow we've always been able to expand the capacity. At this point, you're removing buildings to expand capacity, right? So it's been looked at as a facility that would probably have gotten offline a long time ago, according to original plans. So now it's going to be, you know, possibly an 80-year facility versus a 25-year facility. That's a little different in how that's affecting the local community and the things that have happened, and obviously, you know, local communities obviously had lawsuits and things of that nature and complaints. So I just want to make sure we have the whole picture available, because there's some things that, you know, rate-wise is, you know, cost is always a question, but that doesn't answer all the impacts. And there's, I think, as you know, you simplify things here a lot. Obviously, a more comprehensive plan will have all these other impacts we talked about, you mentioned, mentioned, with a few questions already. So there's just a lot of the impacts locally that I think we need to consider, particularly being, you know, the closest, one of the closest cities to the facility, that I think we have a responsibility to make sure we're looking at that as well as just as an overall county thing. That's just my thoughts to the council.
I appreciate that. And in fact, simultaneously, as we're meeting and discussing the plan here, we're hosting our semi-annual community meeting. And in fact, I was there for the first half of it this evening, because we really do believe we have an obligation to this region, and specifically to our neighbors, to operate responsibly and be responsive to their concerns and interests as well. And certainly, these community meetings that we regularly hold help us to understand what their interests are and to do our best job in responding, and that's certainly the case within this plan as well. So thanks for your comments.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Do you have more?
No, sir. Thank you very much. We, again, appreciate your interest, and we, myself and my staff, remain available if you'd like to come, us to come back for any study sessions or to address any future public meetings. We're happy to do that. And we also have a standing invitation for you to come and tour the landfill. We do 80, boy, this year alone, we've done 85 tours. It's a very informative experience, and we certainly welcome the opportunity to share that with you as well.
Director McLaughlin, thank you so much for coming in this evening. You know, I spend a lot of time, or spend a decent amount of time, in Sub-Saharan Africa, which is an area that I love, but does not have the kind of structured, organized waste management that we have here. And it's one of the things you really unfortunately notice when you don't have it. So it's one of those things that people around here don't think about it very much, but boy, oh, boy, it has an impact on quality of life, so.
Certainly does.
Thank you. And closing, Councilmember Ramos.
I have one last technical question, because you mentioned that all the 37 cities in King County need to take action, and you said accept or reject. The King County Council decides it, and then it goes to the cities. I'm not sure what that means when you say, what does it matter? We accept or reject? The county's doing that. What's our legal role in that position?
Right.
And what impact is it?
So the county council must ultimately adopt a plan, but that only gets us halfway there. That's not enough to make it an adopted plan. It then requires cities to adopt. It does not require 37 cities to adopt. It's just the cities that elect to take action during that 120-day period. If that's three cities, it's three cities. They could be three small cities, three big cities, or any mix or combination. But it's cities that take action during the 120 days. And if those cities, by population count, reject the plan, then the plan is not adopted. On the other hand, if those three cities, no matter the size, accept the plan, right? You could have just to point communities around Bellevue, take action, and they all said, this is a good plan? It is your plan.
And then you said by population count of those that take action.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Micah. Anything further?
That was it?
All right. Councilmember Hunt.
I just wanted to make a final comment. So Micah, you had asked about interest in continuing the conversation, and I personally wanted to express that I thought this was very informative. I think that with the changing situation in terms of recycling and the policy of China that's changing recycling, I think that I'm interested in learning more. I've talked with members of the community that are interested in learning more about what happens with our garbage and our recycling. And so I would like to keep up on the issue, and that's my personal response to this presentation and previous information about recycling that we received, is that it's very educational, and I'd like to keep up on the issue.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
I just wanted to plus one to the previous comments. I just think that this is critically important, and as we, as things move ahead, loving, you know, just to have more information about that. I have a lot of, lot of members of the community talking to me about this at this time.
Good.
Great.
And I will ask if there's any members of the public that want to speak to us this evening? Nope? All right. No further, nothing further? All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Micah.
Absolutely. Yeah, we would, it sounds like we have some...